Welcome to everybody. I'm glad to see you. If you would please stand and join me in the invocation and the pledge. Lord, we ask your blessings upon our meeting tonight. Grant us wisdom and compassion in our efforts to move our city forward. Help us to reach sound decisions that promote the common good of all, especially those who are less fortunate than ourselves. We continue to pray for those affected by Hurricane Ian, as well as those working to help in their recovery. We thank you for the gift of our amazing city and for the freedoms we enjoy as citizens of this great country. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to remind everybody to please silence your electronic devices. And before we begin, Mr. Ingram, would you please come to the podium for a second, please?
Sure.
I would just like to publicly announce to everybody that Mr. Ingram here is officially our new finance director.
Oh, my goodness.
And so. Many of you have seen Mr. Ingram around for quite some time. He's been with the city for a long time. He has really come through for us in a pinch, found himself in the middle of the budget season as the interim finance director and stepped right up in a complicated year with all these federal funding streams coming our way, which is good, but it makes his job a lot more complicated than it normally would be. A lot of changes, new city managers, interim city managers. So Mr. Ingram has really held down the fort there for us, and we're very proud to have you, not you've been aboard, but we're proud to have you now officially as a director of the finance department, so.
Thank you, Mayor Ross. I'm very humbled and just consider myself a public servant and want to continue practicing, being a good servant and steward for the city.
Well, thank you, Mr. Ingram. You've certainly done a great job, and we look forward to your continued success, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. So our first item is the proclamation of Safe Sleep Awareness Month. Mr. Dexter Lewis is here from the Children's Board of Hillsborough County to accept the proclamation. Welcome, Dexter. How are you?
On behalf of Dexter.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Well, welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
So I guess I'll read this and then let you say a few words. So whereas the City of Temple Terrace recognizes that infant unsafe sleep is one of the leading causes of preventable child deaths in the community, and sleep education for parents and caregivers safeguards the health and well-being of our most precious resource, children and families. Whereas, according to the American Academy of Pediatrics, infants are 40 times more likely to die in an adult bed than a crib, resulting in 190 deaths in Tampa Bay, in the Tampa Bay area since 2013. 190 deaths since 2013. This is preventable, folks. Whereas, all family members and caregivers should be taught the ABCs of infant safe sleep, ensuring infants sleep A, alone on their backs, B, and in a crib, C. The Children's Board of Hillsborough County strongly recommends using a firm mattress with tightly fitted sheets and keeping cribs free of blankets, pillows, bumper pads, and stuffed animals. The City of Temple Terrace values the efforts of the Prevent Needless Deaths Campaign in providing ongoing education to prevent unsafe sleep deaths throughout the community, throughout community outreach, creating social awareness, and providing resources to teach parents life-saving skills. Now therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Safe Sleep Awareness Month. Come through. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you to the council. My name is Timothy Bennett. I'm the Community Relations Manager for the Children's Board of Hillsborough County. So we, as most know, are a local quasi-government agency that funds nonprofits that focuses on supporting children and families in the county. So we have about 66 nonprofits that get funding. That's about 100-plus programs. But the main reason we're here today is to talk about Safe Sleep Awareness Month. And we also manage the Child Safety Campaign here in Hillsborough County that focuses on the three leading causes of 100% preventable deaths, safe sleep being one of them, water safety, and chicken baby syndrome. So according to the American Academy of Pediatrics, just as you read in the proclamation, making sure that families and people in the community just know that making sure kids are following the ABCs, like family infants should be alone on their back in a crib, is very important. And then also just a piece on if you have a crib, making sure that there's no bumpers, blankets, pillows, toys, or anything that can be a hazard to an infant that can cause suffocation. And then we do support room sharing, so making sure there's a crib in a room, but not co-sleeping. Co-sleeping of a parent dealing with an infant can have a lot of, you could become exhausted and things like that, and you don't want to, by mistake, like roll onto the child or something like that. So definitely having the crib or bassinet in the room is important. And last thing I just mentioned is that the Children's Board do have a Family Resource Center here in Temple Terrace. We do talk about these things, like you can go to any of our Family Resource Centers. The one that's here in Temple Terrace is located on Fowler. They talk about the safe sleep practices there. We can give you resources. You also can go to our website for this, which is www预防不必要的死亡网站.com. That will talk about it as well. We can get resources. There's videos and everything that talks about it that way, too. But I want to thank Temple Terrace. I want to thank you, Mayor, the council. You guys have always been gracious and always putting the word out, like every year you mention, your council talks about the importance of safe sleep. So we, the Children's Board, do appreciate that and want to thank you for that partnership.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bennett. Thank you for being here tonight. And I find this number to be staggering. It's 190 deaths in just the Bay Area in less than 10 years. That's a lot.
Yeah, it is. Hillsborough County Medical Examiner Office, I think in 2021, has been 11. So that number's still pretty staggering, so we've still got a lot of work to do to make sure families know, especially like new parents. And sometimes the grandparents, too, with old-school practices, knowing that we need to make sure we follow the ABCs.
Right, 100% preventable.
Yes, sir.
Cute crib sets. Yeah.
So we have one more proclamation, but I don't know that the recipient, is Mr. Barber here? Hmm. Should we just read it?
I think so.
Okay. So the next proclamation is pertaining to Pedestrian Safety Month, and I've asked Council Member Donna, or not Donna here, Council Member Abel, if she would like to read the proclamation because she is our council liaison to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Council, so I thought it would be appropriate.
Proclamation says, whereas the Florida Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles joins the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration in recognizing October as National Pedestrian Safety Month, reminding drivers and pedestrians that staying safe is a shared responsibility, and whereas, the United States Department of Transportation's National Highway Safety Administration is strengthening its efforts to improve safety for vulnerable road users by inviting local leaders, traffic safety professionals, transportation planners and engineers, other stakeholders, and concerned residents to join in helping to create a transportation system for all people to easily and safely walk and cross roadways. And whereas, at some point, every person is a pedestrian, so it's important for everyone to understand the rules of the road when it comes to motorists and pedestrians. And whereas, walking is a great way to get the physical activity needed to obtain health benefits. Many people rely on walking for transportation purposes, which creates environmental benefits that can lead to healthier, quieter, cleaner, and safer streets. Walking can also improve local economies and enhance social and community engagement, leading to more vibrant, resilient, and livable spaces. Now I would like to proclaim October as Pedestrian Safety Month.
Thank you. And we'll make sure that we get that to the recipient. Thank you, Councilmember. Next up, we have some good friends from King High School here. We have the principal, Arlene Castelli, alumni board president, Eddie Vance, who is no stranger to this room, and board member Gwen Mora are here to make a presentation about the upcoming King High School Homecoming festivities. Welcome, friends.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you very, very much. Before we start off, you know, I want to, we want to thank you for your service, your public service to the city and such. And we want to thank the city workers for everything you do for our residents and for each other. I do recognize quite a few faces still, so thank you. Yes, it's our annual homecoming event dating back to the 1960s. This is actually our 62nd year. So we got hit our first year. Our 60th anniversary was during the hurt of COVID, so it got postponed a little bit, but we're back in tact again. And we have our events coming up, which begin on Thursday, October 27th. Thursday night at 6:00 PM, starting at Temple Terrace Elementary and around the first hole of the Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club, is the Homecoming Parade. That is a free event, very child-friendly. We encourage all the parents out there to bring their students out, bring their children out and see the students from King. It's going to be a very, very small-town parade, and we would like to see you come and attend. Immediately following that, at 6:30, is our annual Wall of Pride. The Wall of Pride is where we induct alumni of King that have made a significant contribution to society or back to King or to the general public. And Gwen is going to talk about that in just a moment. Friday is the Homecoming Game, in which King takes on rival Middleton. We're looking forward to another victory there. And then Saturday is our annual golf tournament. We have a 1 o'clock shotgun, and we tend to have, at times, we have sold out, so we are still looking for a few more golfers, and hopefully you guys can come out and join us. I'll now turn it over to Gwen, who is our Wall of Pride chairperson.
Well, as Eddie said, our Wall of Pride really recognizes alumni who have made very significant contributions to their profession or to their community. And this year, we recognized three. We're going to start with Dr. Harris McIlwain. He was a class of 65. Our next one is the Honorable Judge Monica Purdy, and she's the class of 85. And then we are going to have Mr. Alan O'Keefe, the class of 92. It's a big event. We have over 100 people attending, and it is going to be immediately following the parade. And you are all invited to come if you'd like to come out and see what we do and join us. We have a few more spaces that you can join us for dinner. And now, Arlene's going to talk to you a little bit about King.
Hi. Just want to thank you guys again for all the support that we have for King High School. We know that King High School's not quite in the Temple Terrace region, but you guys support us like we are. We use your facilities. We use the rec center, the pool, we use the golf course, we use the tennis courts. There's so many things you guys help us with, some of the grants that you give out. So we just want to thank you all for supporting King High School. You know, education's a tough thing right now. There's a lot of things that we're going through, a lot of changes, and Temple Terrace has always been steadfast in their support, and we really do want to tell you thank you. We didn't say on the schedule there, Saturday night is also our Homecoming Dance, and it's, we're going back old-school, and we're going to have it on the school campus, which is what we did last year. So more and more schools, I hope, are trying to go to that because, you know, if you, it becomes cost prohibitive when you take it off-campus. So we are having it, last year we had it in our courtyard, and it was a really nice area, right in the grassy area. So we're doing that again on Saturday night. But I did want to take an opportunity to thank you all for everything, all the support that you give King High School. We're moving forward with our IB program, ACE program, that we're going to have, and so we're just looking forward to getting more of our Temple Terrace kids to come to King High School as well. So thank you for the support.
Thank you, Arlene. So I have to tell you, this morning I got a very nice email from your student body president, Isha Khan.
Isha, Isha, yes.
And inviting me to the Homecoming.
Oh, good.
But I want to make sure I let you know, and I responded to her, too, that there are at least two other, and I think three other, things that we are somewhat obligated to on the same date. So we are currently kind of juggling our schedules to see who can cover which of these things. I know that I can't be at the Homecoming because I know for sure that I'm obligated for an event with the Planning Commission, but then there's also Soaring Cities Annual. So there's some calendar juggling going on right now, and we certainly want to make sure that we're, have a presence, but I don't want you to look around and say, well, wait a, you know, only got one council member, you know, where's the mayor?
We have help from James.
I will be there. Yeah, yeah. I just, but I wanted you guys to understand because I don't want you to think, man, you know.
Nope, we don't think that at all.
Yeah.
October is a really tight one.
It is.
We do know that.
It is, yeah. And we're kind of committed to a couple of things already, so we'll do the best we can.
Absolutely.
But don't take it as a sign of, you know, we're lackluster. We're not.
Tell a whole lot of friends. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Thanks. You, too. Okay. Next, we have some board appointments. The first one is Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee Alternate Member Appointment. There's one vacancy on the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee for the unexpired term of Peter Davitt. The city received one application from Jamie Morris. Is Jamie Morris here? Okay. Is there a motion to appoint Jamie Morris as an alternate member to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee?
I move to approve. Second.
Motion, second. Discussion on the motion. If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? Ms. Morris is appointed. The next is related. There is one vacancy for the city's representative on the Hillsborough Transportation Planning Organization's Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. That title's too long. I could never serve on that committee. Again, to fill an unexpired term for Peter Davi, oh, no, Peter Davitt's term has expired. The city received one application from Jamie Morris. Is there a motion to approve Jamie Morris to, don't make me say it all over again, Hillsborough TPO Advisory Committee?
I move to approve the appointment.
Second.
Motion and a second. I do have one question, and several months ago I had asked if we could, did you, were you able to work this out? Is that how this?
Yes.
Okay. So this didn't happen mysteriously. You had a part in this.
I did, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? Next is the Riverwatch Task Force Regular Member Appointment. There's one vacancy on the Riverwatch Task Force as the term of Thomas Zarella has expired. City received an application from Catherine Alfredo, who's currently an alternate member. Is Ms. Alfredo here? Do not see her. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No nays? All righty. Councilmembers, have you had an opportunity to review the minutes from the October 4 City Council Meeting?
Move to approve.
Took about five seconds.
Yeah. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Minutes are adopted. Next, persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. We have a three-minute time limit for all public comment. We do ask that speakers come to the podium and state your name and city of residence. We do like to assure everybody that your comments are taken seriously and followed up on by your elected officials, the city manager, and directors in attendance. We take these things very seriously. I currently have one request to speak from Mr. Eddie Birch. Mr. Birch, welcome.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you for squeezing me in today. Eddie Birch, for the record, city of residence actually is unincorporated Hillsborough County, but I'm here tonight representing the Soaring City Innovation Partnership. I want to thank the city for your sponsorship of our innovation gathering, which, as the mayor mentioned a little while ago, also takes place on October 27th. So I wanted to invite all of you, if you can squeeze it in on October 27th, to come out and join us in really celebrating this area as a innovation district with all the research and innovation going on at USF and Moffett and Advent Health and the VA Hospital. That's something that Soaring City is dedicated to enhancing and encouraging. So next Thursday, we have our innovation gathering at Rhythm, which is also known as University Mall, from 4:30 to 7:30. 100 tables of innovation where we'll have tech startups and community organizations showing off their innovations, and we'll also have some free food from the area's favorite restaurants. And then we have, the theme of the night is the Metaverse in You. You've probably heard and read about the Metaverse, and the theme of this year's event is the Metaverse in You. We have Brony Abovitz and Guy Gililand. They're both thought leaders on that topic. They'll be speaking, and we'll also present our Community Impact Awards, and we'll present the Jack Koloski Healthcare Innovator Award that honors healthcare innovations. So hopefully you can, you know, join us at some point in the evening. Then, of course, I know Friday night, I know where I'll be at the Homecoming Game, but anyway, just wanted to make sure I extend that invitation and thank you for your support of the innovation gathering.
Thank you, Mr. Birch. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the council? Okay. Seeing that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda includes a resolution approving the purchase of a replacement fire command vehicle with lighting and radio package. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Thank you. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Consent agenda is adopted. Next is a resolution approving school support committee grants. School Support Committee Vice Chair Kingsley Kelly is here to explain. Welcome.
Hi.
Hello.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kingsley Kelly Peratino, and I'm Vice Chair of the Temple Terrace School Support Committee. On behalf of the committee, I would like to thank you for your continued support and generosity, especially with grants that benefit our Temple Terrace students. The school committee reviewed 49 grants. It was one of our biggest turnouts on October 3rd, and we are recommending full or partial funding for 35 of the grants. Additionally, the school support committee voted to recommend a $300 donation to Temple Terrace Reeds to help offset some of the costs that are incurred with that event. We began with a balance of $30,000. Upon approval of the grant recommendations and donation to Temple Terrace Reeds, the school support committee will have a remaining balance of $4,052.40. We plan to discuss at our next meeting ways we can use this money to support Temple Terrace schools. I'm happy to answer questions as best I can, and again, thank you all for your support.
Thank you. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Councilmembers, questions? Any questions? I do have one comment, and this, first of all, thank you and all the members of the school support committee. You folks, you do a very difficult and unexciting job in poring through these, and it always amazes me how seriously you take this because you, you don't always approve them. I mean, there are some that you send back or request more information, or, so, I mean, you really do a great job for the city, and I appreciate that. There's one on here that gives me a little angst, and I tried to think about this, and I, for a while, considered trying to convince my colleagues here to actually pull it, but I'm not going to do that. But I do think it's important that these schools that we support realize that this is a partnership, and partnerships imply that two parties collaborate together towards common goals. It's not just a, you know, one party just gives you everything. And there's one of these schools that I don't think has really done a great job of being a 50-50 partner here, and I don't really want to share all of this on the dais right here, so I'll stop. But I think it's important for the schools and the school administrators to realize that this is a partnership. And, you know, you can take a hard line as to what you're willing to do and what you're not willing to do, but you can't take a hard line with us on Monday and then come and ask for money from us on Tuesday, which is really what one of these schools has done. And, and so I kind of hope that this gets back to the school that I'm talking about because I think the relationship, the partnership, needs to be recalibrated a bit, and I'll just leave it at that, so.
I think it will.
So is there a motion to approve the grants?
I move to approve the grants as presented by the school support committee. Second.
Oh, she beat you. There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No nays? Thank you again.
Thank you. And that is our donation line. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is a resolution approving low-income household water assistance program supplier. Wow. All right, I'm going to start over. I got to take a deeper breath. A resolution approving low-income household water assistance program supplier interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County.
The title's a little rough.
Yes. Finance Director Jim Ingram is here to explain. First time I've got to use that term.
Sounds good.
Yes, it does.
Appreciate it. Well, good evening again, Mayor Ross and the City Council. Staff recommends that council adopt a resolution approving the low-income household water assistance program supplier interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County. And just to be clear right off, the supplier is us, the City of Temple Terrace. The key points of this agreement with Hillsborough County includes the following. The county accepts applications and determines the eligibility of the households to receive assistance. Eligible households must have water, wastewater, orirages, water services that have been disconnected or in jeopardy of disconnection, or have a current bill. The county will provide the city with an electronic notice of payment for eligible city customers. So when they make a payment for an eligible customer, they will notify us. The city accepts the payment on behalf of the eligible customer and credits the full amount to the eligible customer's account. The city shall not use any portion of the payment from the county toward reimbursement of fees charged by collection agencies. And this fits in with our city goal number four, to support and enhance a high quality of life for the city's residents, businesses, and visitors by providing sustainable, environmentally sensitive, cost-effective infrastructure and services to promote health, personal safety, transportation, economic growth, and civic vitality. I will add that this interlocal agreement, the county is doing most of the work. I checked with our utility billing and customer service group, and they said it'll require minimal effort on their part since they are taking the applications, they are notifying us, and sending us the money. We just have to apply the funds to the applicants that they have determined are eligible to receive this funding. So I stand for, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Councilmember questions?
Thank you.
Councilmember Donahue? Council member Donahue?
I have a few questions. The first one is, are we using a collection agent now?
That's... No.
Okay.
We are not... Actually, since COVID, we have not been imposing penalties. We will... At some point, we will get back to that. We are not using a collection agent, but that is part of the language. If we, for instance, do start using a collection agent to go after delinquent payments, then we are not allowed to apply that to any fee that we might incur for that collection agency.
Okay, okay. And my second question is, I'm sure you know who many of these citizens are. Are you going to make them aware of this possibility than by mailing them a letter or some good news that they can apply now?
Well, first, let me answer that. The county says that they are going to be responsible for the awareness. And it doesn't prevent us from, you know, being proactive, as you mentioned, and sending out notices, perhaps with the bill. We haven't figured out exactly how we will do that, but that is a good question. The county is going to have a... Let me have it right here. I reached out to Audrey Ziegler, who's the Director of the Social Services Department. And she said that county webpages will have all the information for how to apply. And they are required to promote the program per the grant that they get. And they will rely on their communications department. They will have two call centers that will refer directly to the program when residents are seeking assistance. I think our part, we can certainly be, again, proactive in making citizens aware and giving them maybe a link or how to reach out to these county places to apply.
Right. It's not like you have to tell everyone with a direct letter. But the ones who you know are behind, and you've either had conversation or you've had no conversation, but you know they're behind. I mean, to me, that would be the first ones who should get a direct notification from us that there is something out there for them. Because, you know, that doesn't... Just because there is a website doesn't mean that people know.
That's true.
They're in sad situation already. So, thank you.
That's a very good suggestion that we will certainly follow up on.
Just remember, I'm not directing you. I'm making it in front of the city manager so that he can tell you that that's a good idea or not.
Vice Mayor Schuster?
I had two questions also. One, you just answered. We're not going to know who necessarily falls under the criteria for what the county's looking for, for approving the program. But we can certainly steer the water customer in that direction. And I didn't... I couldn't find... What's the duration of the agreement? Is it... How long is their grant?
It's... Well, I don't know how long their grant is, but it is to be renewed annually.
Okay, all right. And we'll have... We'll be able to look at some point in time how many people are participating?
I'm sure we can get that data from the county. And that will be part of the... I would assume we would want that to be part of the renewal process when it comes up next September.
Thank you.
Other questions? City Manager?
Just to clarify, related to the question about how long the program lasts, I believe it's one year right now. I think they have funding probably from the federal government as a pass-through. And they're saying if they have funding at the end of September next year, then they might consider doing it again. But right now, I wouldn't want to mislead folks into thinking this is a permanent program. It seems to be very much an experiment at this point.
Okay. And there are provisions in here that if the funding is no longer available...
Other questions? So just for the public watching, maybe just a point of clarification. What's happening here is really, it always sounds a little more complicated than it is. The federal government released funding for payment of water and utility bills that are delinquent, for people who meet the criteria, which is there's obviously below a certain income threshold and other qualifiers. The county, Hillsborough County, is the pass-through for this federal money. And they are administering this program. The city has to adopt this interlocal agreement because we are the water supplier in order to accept payment from the county who's giving us federal dollars for these people that qualify. So this is a win all the way around. I don't want anybody in the city to get the idea that, oh, we're taking delinquent water bills and we're passing that over to the other residents. It is your tax dollars, but it's your federal tax dollars. This is coming... This money is coming from Washington. So Hillsborough County is a pass-through to this, which raises... Is the reason why the length of this is going to be determined by how much money is made available, so. Okay. Other questions? Good. Okay. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the low-income housing water assistance program supplier interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County.
Okay.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion?
I have a comment.
Yes.
I just wanted to say, I was talking to the city manager about this, and he said this was your initiative and your research to bring this to us. So I'd like to thank you for, you know, scoping this out and making sure we approve this for our citizens because this is huge. This is really important, so it's a lot.
To be fair, the county reached out to us and actually reached out to Troy. And Troy asked if I would take a look at it. And no, I agree. It's a great program.
Thank you.
Thanks to both of you for running this to ground. Okay. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays? Thank you, Mr. Finance Director Ingram. Next is the second public hearing and second reading of ordinance 1537, a land development code text amendment 22-02, amending section 12-234, Part B, Section 48, outdoor seating for restaurants located within the commercial general zoning district. And I'll open the public hearing, and our senior planner, Gus Carpus, is here to explain.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. So I do have a PowerPoint here, and I put one in front of all of you so it's easier to kind of read here. So as the mayor said, this is the second reading and hopefully the adoption of ordinance 1537 for a land development code text amendment, amending section 12-234 sub-B sub-48 as it pertains to outdoor seating. Again, just a quick little background. The current ordinance limits outdoor seating to 20% of the permitted indoor seating, which is limited by the fire code at this point. Some local businesses have brought, you know, concern to the city, asking that we look at this to allow them to have increased outdoor seating. I guess during the pandemic, obviously, a lot of those folks had outdoor seating, and it was very popular with their patrons. And some of these folks can provide more than 20% outside. So again, the ordinance would remove the percentage requirement and would tie the outdoor seating area to the area that's leased by the business. And then it also requires clear, unobstructed pathways as required by ADA requirements, American Visibility Act, and the submission of a plan to the city staff for review prior to the outdoor seating being approved. So how the ordinance currently reads is shown right here. The only portion of the existing ordinance that's really being changed is subdivision B. So B48B, which currently reads, "Outdoor seating shall constitute no more than 20% of the total enclosed seating capacity of the restaurant, shall be located immediately adjacent to the place of business where the surface is provided, and shall be subject to the submission and approval of a site design slash layout plan which may address such items, including but not limited to buffering, accessibility, and maintenance." So this is the only portion of the ordinance. So what the proposed ordinance does is expands that subdivision B and takes out, again, permits the seating, outdoor seating, again, based on a site plan approved by the city. So it does say that it removes the percentage limitation and ties, again, to the area of the leased space and prohibits expansion into those areas outside of their leased space. So when we look at a plan, we're going to make sure that they're not impacting the adjacent lessors or people, the adjacent businesses with their seating. Then the outdoor seating, as we said, would have requirements to make sure that they meet the ADA requirements, the minimum width. In this case, I believe it's 36 inches for safe travel. So... And it also outlines the information that we're going to expect to see here again with is the buffering, you know, public safety maintenance requirements and that type of stuff. And then finally requires that the outdoor seating area be maintained in a neat and orderly fashion to keep them from becoming an eyesore. So upon adoption of this ordinance, much like the existing ordinance, enforcement of these provisions would be done by code enforcement as part of their job. So again, having looked at this, they'd go before the council and in a second meeting in September for first reading. And so this is, again, the second reading and hopefully adoption. So the community development staff recommends city council adopt ordinance 1537 approving the land development code text amendment, amending section 12-234B48, amending the outdoor seating requirements for restaurants located within the commercial general zoning district. And I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Carpus. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Council members, questions? City Attorney?
Just one thing to add. I just wanted you to take note that when, at the first reading, it was the title of the ordinance included the words "for applicability and severability." We've amended the title only, so when the clerk reads it, it will not have the words "applicability and" in there. It will just say "providing for severability."
Thank you. Okay. Council members, if there are no questions, I'll close the hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida relating to outdoor seating at restaurants, amending section 12-234B subsection 48 of the City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion? Not? All those in favor... Oh, City Attorney. We almost made it.
Still didn't quite get right. When the clerk read the title, the words "providing for severability" were left out, and those should stay in. So I don't know what happened.
Okay. So do we need to correct the reading?
Yes. I mean, I can read it if I don't know what you have. But then the words... More words got left out just now than should have gotten left out.
Okay. So I'll have you read it because apparently I wasn't given the...
Okay.
Okay. So the City Attorney will read the official title of the ordinance.
Ordinance 1537, an ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida relating to outdoor seating at restaurants, amending section 12-234 sub-B sub-48 of the City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date.
Do we have a revised motion?
I revise my motion.
Move to approve?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays? The ordinance is adopted on second reading. Thank you, Mr. Carpus. Next item is the first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the Code of Ordinances, firefighter pension and retirement. Fire Chief Ian Kemp.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Ian Kemp, your fire chief. I stand before you tonight for the first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the Code of Ordinances, fire pension and retirement system. Currently, members of the fire department who are in the drop are prohibited from becoming trustees of a Temple Terrace fire pension plan. The ordinance change would allow current members of the fire department who are members of the pension plan that are in the drop plan the ability to hold the position of pension board trustee. The Temple Terrace Fire Pension Board has formally approved this change at their August 11, 2022, meeting. It is recommended that the city council approve an ordinance on the first reading removing the exclusion that drop employees are ineligible to be a trustee of the Temple Terrace Fire Retirement System.
Thank you, Chief. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, closed. Council member questions? Vice Mayor Schuster?
I'm a little fuzzy on why it was there to begin with.
I don't know. It was in there prior to me sitting on the board. I've had this conversation with a few people. In the early years of the drop plan, I think it was really unknown what individuals that were in the drop were able to do or not able to do. So I think there was a lot of exclusions. But talking with our attorney and talking to other pension administrators and other trustees of other plans, this is almost non-existent anymore. So pretty much anybody that's in the drop as well is able to be a trustee on most pension plans that I know of. And it certainly makes sense. I mean, you're still an employee. And so it certainly makes sense that you would not exclude those people. A lot of those individuals in some plans have a lot of experience, and you would not want to exclude them. As long as the membership wants to keep them on the plan, it certainly makes sense that we would not want to keep them from being on.
There was a legislative change, wasn't there? I thought there was a legislative change.
You know, maybe early on, there could have been some type of legislation that stated early on that... But it would have been... Had to have been pretty early because I know it was changed for a lot of plans years ago, if it was in, yeah.
Other questions? Okay, very good. I will close the hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances for the City of Temple Terrace, Chapter 2, Administration and Elections, Article 3, Offices and Employees, Division 3, Pension and Retirement, amending subdivision 4, Firefighters, Section 2-200, Board of Trustees, Providing for Codification, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
Good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion?
Move to approve on first reading ordinance amending Chapter 2 the Code of Ordinances, firefighters, pension, and retirement. Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays? The ordinance is adopted on first reading and will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, November 1, 2022. Moving on to council business, I have one item that is really rather minor, but we want to do everything on the up and up and transparently. In the contract for Mr. Baia, we put in there regarding his cell phone that the city would provide a cell phone, which we would be willing to do. But we also have a cell phone stipend program here at the city. In fact, I think we just upped the amount there during the last budget. And he would prefer to just get the stipend and just have one phone instead of two. And so he... We've talked about it, he and I, and I...
Makes sense.
Does make any difference to me. I mean, that's what we did before. But nobody wants to change the terms of his employment without, you know, letting everybody know and making sure then, get this council because he doesn't work for me, he works for us. So if everybody's okay with that, I'd like to have somebody make a motion that we revise that paragraph of his contract. Mr. Baia, do you have anything to add to that, or...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, this is a minor thing, but it obviously needs to be clarified and approved by the council. by the council. So when it was, when the provision was first in there, I didn't even think about it. I just assumed that was the practice here at the city of Temple Terrace. I've come to find out that it's not the practice. The prevalent practice is really to do the cellphone stipend, and this would be the same stipend that any other employee would receive.
Correct. Let's just show him the place she was.
I'm fine. You can do it by motion, you can do it by resolution, and then that, we draft the resolution afterwards and...
Your mic.
And it can be done by resolution, and then we would attach the resolution to the contract.
Okay.
I move to approve the, move resolution to approving the changes to the contract to allow for the stipend in lieu of separate cellphone.
Second, that.
Very good. Motion is second. Discussion on the motion.
As long as we get the number.
Council member Chambers.
Are we approving a resolution or approving the, to work on the resolution, which comes back to us?
No, this would be it. We would draft it, though, after the fact, but it would be a resolution to amend the contract to allow for a stipend for the cellphone instead of the city providing a cellphone.
Thank you. I'm good.
Okay, very good. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays. All right. Other council business, carryover council business. Council member Abel.
So this is carryover council business, but it's also related to a recent board report. So at my most recent affordable housing board meeting, I learned about an increasing concern about a lack of affordable housing specifically related to the aftermath of Hurricane Ian because, you know, many homes were destroyed, especially affordable housing was destroyed. And a lot of times when one area lacks housing, people will shift to another area. We already have a severe problem here in Hillsborough County. That's compounded by the fact that COVID-era rental assistance ended at the end of September. So many people were in housing that they maybe couldn't afford on their own, and they're no longer receiving assistance. So there's some speculation that I think has a lot of merit, that there's going to be a big spike in evictions. And evictions are really damaging and traumatic, and it makes it very hard to get new housing after that. So not only do we have a shortage, we have natural disaster, and we have the end of assistance, which is setting us up for a really bad situation. And we've talked about the tenant bill of rights in the past, and I wanted to discuss that with you a little bit further because since we last talked, Tampa has adopted it. And in addition to that, they've made some changes to it. And just to give you a little bit of information, it involves protection against income discrimination for housing. It also has, it provides notice to tenants about what their rights are. In addition to that, it requires the landlords to provide a written notice of each late fee that any tenant incurs, and it prohibits retaliation for tenants who report a health and safety violation or file a fair housing complaint. Recent things have been added to include a 30-day notice required for lease termination for month-to-month lesses. It also requires a 60-day notice for other residential leases and a 60-day notice for rent increases as well. So no one gets caught in a tough situation where they won't be able to pay their rent I think that when we discussed this before, the concern, the concern that I understood from council was, could we enforce this? Do we have the, the staff and the ability to enforce something like this? So I think that I'd like to, if council agrees, ask staff to look into what this might entail, if we can find a way to partner with the county for, for help with that aspect of it. And so we can get a better sense of what this might look like if we were to adopt something like this in Temple Terrace.
Thank you, council member. May I add?
Please.
Begin the discussion with a little addition because we can't talk other than hear. So I have something to kind of add to what council member Abel said, and that is, I've had a couple of discussions recently with Commissioner Overman on the, on the county commission about this topic because although I'm not as well-versed as you are because I don't attend the meetings, I agree with you that we, the problem is only getting worse. And so I talked to her and I told her, because she was asking me, you know, what's, you know, how can we work together on this? And I told her that the primary resistance on the council wasn't so much the terms of the ordinance, it was our ability to, we don't have the infrastructure to handle complaints, to investigate those complaints. I mean, that can be, that can be labor-intensive. Somebody's got to go, they got to read the leases, they got to interview people. We, you know, we have three code officers, that's it. So I talked to Commissioner Overman and said, "Look, I'm willing, we're willing to have another discussion, I hope." I mean, I'm willing to be in favor of having another discussion, it's not my choice alone, but I'm in favor of us having another discussion if the county is willing to handle the complaints inside the city limits." So she took that back to her staff, to Bonnie Wise and some other people, and she called me back, and she goes, "Yes, we will do that." So our concerns about the enforcement of it, which is really what the gist of our resistance was, we could probably find a way to work around that, and the county is willing to do the enforcement here, which really shifts the discussion now to the terms of the ordinance itself rather than how are we going to handle it. Now, it's been a year or so since we looked at the draft that was then, and it has been revised since. And I'll be honest with you, I haven't read it in a year or more, whenever that was, and I've never read the revisions that have happened since then. So anyway, if you're asking, I'm in favor of us looking at this again, making sure that the terms of the ordinance are something that we like because we're going to have to do what they do. We can't tell the county, "Yeah, you, we want you to be the enforcer of this inside of our corporate limits, but we want to change," you know, in Temple Terrace, it's going to be a little bit different. You can't do that. If you're going to ask them to do it, you got to have the same thing that they have, which is probably an ordinance that just says it's in effect in Temple Terrace too because their ordinance specifically says it's only in effect in unincorporated. So anyway, I, I support you in this. I think it's something, we need to look more. I mean, we have, and I don't think any of us have read the ordinance as it stands right now, but the enforcement component, I think there's a workaround.
Good.
And I didn't have that discussion with her to try to go around you. These were hallway discussions. These weren't like, we didn't, I just don't want you to think I'm going around on a forum, you know? So.
I happened to just have a conversation with, with Commissioner Overman yesterday. She brought the same issue up, and she indicated that you had talked. I think it's probably time to bring it back up again. Let's talk about it. Let's re-review it. It could be an item for, for discussion, see where it goes. The enforcement was the biggest obstacle back in, in the end, and as long, as long as they're willing to work with it, you know, we do have a need, we do have an issue, we do, but we don't, we don't want it to get out of hand so quickly that we can't deal with it. So I think it's, it's probably time, you know, it's, where everything changes, everything morphs, and now's the time to take a look at it. I agree.
I agree.
Can we ask that it come back at next, the next meeting?
Well, let's give them the direction. Let's not give them a...
Well, I mean, we're just going to be reading the ordinance, aren't we?
No, let's just direct him to talk to, because...
All right.
You can't, you put the clock on him now.
I'm ready to read it and get it done.
Yeah. So, city manager.
Just for clarification, Mr. Mayor, council members, would you, we're going to aim to bring it back as quickly as we can. Are you suggesting that we bring it back just as a presentation so you have the ability to have that robust discussion? Or would you like us to bring it back already as an ordinance for first reading and then you have that discussion at that point? What would you prefer?
I think we need an opportunity to read again before you bring it back for a first... So maybe if we can get a copy of it and read it before the next council meeting, and then we have similar discussion then to say, you know, are we okay with this or not before we have you going through all the hoops to draft the language? We haven't read, we've never read the current version, so I think it'd probably be prudent of us to read it. Is that...
That was my whole point, make sure that we can at least have it and read it, and we can have another discussion like this that says, okay, we've read it, we, we like it, we don't like it, let's move forward with the putting it into place. And then we, you also may be able to have some conversation with Ms. Overman if, if there's any more that needs to be said once we've had a chance to...
The county's going to have to approve it.
Right.
I mean, they'll have to approve adding us to their ordinance.
Um, maybe. Yeah, maybe. No, I, I think there's probably a way for us to, I don't know. She's talked to her lawyers, I have not talked to ours, but I think there may be. Now, I know this is slowing it down a little bit, I understand, but this is a big deal, and we need to give people in our community ample time to read it and voice their consent because, you know, our landlords have, this has an impact on them too.
We do it right the first time out the gate, then we don't have to go back...
Yeah, yeah, I know it's, it slows it down a little bit, and I'm sensitive to that too, but you always mess up when you get in a, I mean, you're trying to do things right.
True, but we also know that we have landlords in Temple Terrace who are already having to live by those rules and unincorporated Hillsborough County. This might make life easier for them than, you know, maybe they're already living by it. Have they, you know, because they, it's like, wow, look, this, the rules, I'm going to do the right thing. I'm, so I, I don't think it's going to be as hard as we think it is to get the word out that we have joined the larger county in this.
No, I'm just a little hesitant to put on my yes, 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 bring it back for adoption when I haven't even read it.
Absolutely, oh, absolutely. No, 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 I want to just make sure that we don't wait six, eight weeks before we read it and speak about it again. Let's bring it out, put it on the agenda, we can have a conversation, and by the time we read it and come back in a couple of weeks, we'll, we should have an opinion.
We should probably be able to get it for us to read before the next council meeting.
I would think so.
And put it on the agenda for us to have this discussion, right?
I just pulled it up, it's in MuniCode, I can email it to you tonight.
Yeah, but their latest revision is not.
Oh, I can, I'll find that.
Their latest revision is not because Commissioner Overman did...
I, I've got, I mean, the Hillsborough County's is...
Hillsborough County's is the one that you're obviously looking at. Tampa did their own.
Right.
And they enforced their own, so...
We don't want it to...
Hillsborough County had a revision in August that's not yet been codified, so we have to get that, and I don't know what that revision was, but...
We can get that tomorrow and send it to you.
Because they're meeting tomorrow. I didn't know if there was a final step to that for tomorrow.
So further discussion at our, hopefully our next meeting.
Works.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's good, okay. All right, other council business. We're doing good so far, now's a good night. No other council business? Okay, new business in board reports. Good. Any new business? Okay, city managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, just a few updates. First, I wanted to, I know this has been a concern to several members of council, the fountain, at the fountain shops. I was told today that the owner of the property has had some issues with the first contractor that they had tried to secure for that project, and they've since now have a second contractor apparently in place. They're working through the pricing and the parts that are needed to make the fountain operable again. So they're on the right track, and that's as of this morning, that information. Any questions on that piece?
Nope.
Next, if you'll indulge me, I'd like to invite up our leisure services director, Mr. Langfield.
Welcome, Mr. Langfield.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. Since this is the last council meeting before the event, I wanted to take this opportunity to invite you and the members of the community to come out on Saturday, October 29th, for the Leisure Services Annual Fall Festival, which will take place at the family complex from 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM. There is a $5 fee for all of the little ghosts and goblins that want to come out. Adults accompanying them are free, children under the age of two are free. The activities will include the trunk-or-treating, a hayride, our haunted maze, we will have food trucks, DJ, dancing, costume contest, food trucks. It is a great time. Tickets are on sale now at the family complex, or you can buy them the evening of at the gate. This is one of the premier events that the leisure services department puts on, and a great time will be had by all who attend. I hope to see everybody there in costume, of course. Any questions about the event?
Council members, questions?
Thank you.
The costumes is, that's councilman Chambers's department there.
I'm there. He does it for all of us.
He's always the best dressed.
And the final thing is actually related to this event. So the council have been generous enough to set up a, a day for a meet the city manager event on the, was going to be on the 24th, and in talking with staff, they had a great idea, why don't we just change that and do it as part of the great family fall festival? So I will be there, opportunity for the folks, to anybody in the community, apparently we get 1,200 people that go through that event, so talking to a lot of people. They have mentioned costumes to me more than once, I'm a little concerned. So you may see me in disguise, you may see me just like this, so, but I will be there that evening in lieu of doing it on the 24th, so we're going to cancel the 24th and we'll do this.
Okay.
Thank you.
City attorney?
Nothing from me.
That's not a dunk tank, is it?
I was going to say, dunk tanks are not...
Is that a dunk tank?
I've done that before.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not, you know...
Isn't that a new tradition?
I, that's what I thought, I thought I saw that in the lead, in the contract.
I've had some costume ideas for you.
Council members, anything else?
Yeah, to expand on that a little bit, not the dunk tank, but that day on, on Saturday, the 29th. I mean, in the morning, we walk with the mayor on a nice historic walk. Then we have King High School golf tournament. I know I'm in that one to raise money for the alumni association. And this past year, alumni association has donated over 15,000 directly to King High School for beautification and other projects. And then that night, we have the fall festival at 6:30. So it's a long day for our citizens, and I hope everybody can do all three events.
Good. Thank you. I have, I have to tell you something about, one council member said this to me, and says, you know, we have, we have to walk with the mayor, we have to bike with the mayor, we've had to run with the mayor, and they says, "When are we going to have to sit on the couch and eat potato chips with the mayor?"
Not this mayor.
So, Carl, we need to talk. I think, you know... Anything else? Directors, public, council members? We did the attorney, she didn't, yep. Very good, we will stand adjourned.
Good meeting.